I don't know if this happens to you or it's just me, but it's like when someone's like, oh, how was your weekend? You know how it's only Monday? I'm always like, oh, what did I do?
Yesterday was really busy.
Yeah, yesterday was a great day. Alright. Okay, so first order on the agenda is the business items and that is for the 2024-2026 transportation contract approval. I'm gonna hand this over to Director Fredrickson. First, I think I need a motion for approval for this since it's a voting one.
I think we need to approve the agenda. We didn't vote on that approval of the agenda.
Oh, sorry. You're right. I'm a little sleepy tonight. So we got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. And now we go to the business items, the 2024-2026 transportation contract approval. Under Director Fredrickson, I need a motion for that. And hand that over to Director Fredrickson to discuss the transportation contract, the bus contract.
Thank you. We had several meetings with the bus company. They initially had asked us for a 10-year contract. And the terms were higher than what you're seeing in this final contract. So Dr. Thomas, myself, and Dr. Delville have had many, many conversations. And what we agreed to in the contract you'll see in front of you is for two years. With a 6% increase in year one and an 8% increase in year two. They have asked to have, rather than number of trips, they're asking for hourly rates. It got difficult for them to try to send invoices out by just miles and number of trips. So they asked if we could have it as per hour, and we did agree to that. So again, this is just two years and then we told them we would have further conversations after the end of the first year contract. Can you repeat that it was 6% in year one and? And 8% in year two.
Thank you.
That was, year one was lower than what they had proposed, so they certainly worked with this.
And you shared that, the discussion, like discussion after one year or how?
Yes, so they.
I just kinda wanna, when you shared that the original proposal was a 10-year and going to a two-year, I understand, maybe a little bit more context on that would be great.
So they, and they were asking for a 10-year contract. It's my understanding that the way that they get financing from banks is by having long-term contracts. So when they have to buy a new bus and get the financing for it, the bank is looking for, do you have a long-term contract to be able to pay back the cost of this bus? So they were asking for 10 years and we explained our situation, our financial situation and said, we just were not comfortable signing a 10-year contract because, again, if you looked at our five-year forecast, we're projecting if we don't change our trajectory, that we'll be in SOD and they said that would default on the contract. That wasn't fair to anybody. So we had several conversations and Dr. Thomas came in and talked to them and we assured them that if we can just get this two-year contract, then we'd have a better idea of kind of the direction that we were heading and have a better handle on some of our financial realities and that we could then negotiate a contract after this next year. But that we needed to have something that was at least attainable fiscally for this next year. And then, so they did drop their year-one percentage increase down to 6% and then again changed the hourly rates.
First bus contract, so I have a couple of questions. How long have we been doing business with this bus company specifically?
I think it's been quite a long time. This is our local company. Again, we also had a conversation about an RFP. We didn't feel like we were in a situation where we could do that right now. So another reason why a two-year contract made sense for us. We could certainly look at that going forward. Again, they have our routes, they know our kids, they've been working with our district for the last several years.
Yeah, I can only say good things about our bus company. A couple of the questions, were there any major changes in this contract other than the financial piece of it that we should know all about as a board? I don't see anything redlined, so that's why, a couple of things that I had questions about was, and this may have been in the previous contract, so maybe you could just help me understand why it's written in this contract. But the GPS and the cameras under number six, it's saying that we are responsible for paying for the DPS systems and the cameras. What is our plan, like are we actually putting cameras on buses? Cause I know that that's been a question that's come out from our community from a safety standpoint, so.
We actually put cameras on our special ed routes last year.
Right, I remember that. So with this, is this new in the contract saying the GPS and the cameras in our buses?
That's existing language.
It's existing language, okay. So do we have plans to do that then or?
Right now, if we're going to move forward with additional cameras on any other bus, then that would fall to us to purchase that. No? Yes?
And then, under, on page four, under service conditions, it says that we're contracting 55 buses and that if, the way I read this is basically, doesn't matter what happens with enrollment, that we're responsible for paying for those 55 buses. And then there's some movement in the years that follow. How many buses do we use currently? Because again, my concern would be with declining enrollment, 100 students, that would have an impact on busing and we're still required to pay for 55 buses.
So we still have 55 buses and decline in enrollment would depend on where? You still have the same bus route, you're still getting the same neighborhood kids to the same school. So it may, even a decline in enrollment doesn't necessarily mean we need fewer buses. You would have to look at the routes and then 55 buses right now accommodates all of the routes that we have.
And that's what we've had, is that what we had in the past? Cause there was something in our budget this year where we took money out of our fund balance.
That was last year, we bought two more and that's reflected in those.
Are these 55 buses, are some of those like, for lack of a better term, sub-buses? Like if something breaks down, we've got another bus automatically, do you know what I'm saying? Kind of like backup buses for all 55 used every day?
These are regular routes.
Yeah, these are regular routes. And they're also being used for transportation to athletic events and everything else.
The same fleet.
And then under drivers, number eight, page five, it states that the contractor shall identify one or more individuals in its employ, will serve as driver trainers and will notify the board in writing as to which individuals it is. And I've never seen that come to the board, so.
That is new, I believe that was new legislation that we are required to train bus drivers. Although notify, I mean, I think we just haven't gotten a report from them. They certainly know who it is. They know who their trainers are.
Okay, I just wrote that. I'm under number eight, under drivers. Oh, sorry, it's page five. Do you have yours, have page numbers? B, page five. It's under A, the contractor shall identify one or more individuals in its employ, service driver, and will notify the board in writing as to which individual it is. So I just haven't seen that come to the board, so.
There is a form at the end of the contract.
And I know the other thing that's new with that this year is there was additional requirement training that the state put on to all public transportation. So that's another new piece that they talked about in the negotiations. And I think that was all legislatively that they brought forward.
Yeah, thank you. That's all my questions.
Anybody else? The only question that I had, and I believe Tammy, you've already answered it, was the 6% increase and the 8% increase. 6% is already included in our budget estimate. The 8% for the following year is not, or is it?
Well, we haven't developed, that would be the 25-26 budget.
Okay, but it will be, obviously. I know that we've always had the fuel negotiations and surcharge. I don't think that's been a problem in the past. And then the question that I asked you before, and I believe we worked through it in the last contract, was when we did have an act of God, like the pandemic or whatever, that we, we had talked on the bus contract back in 2020 about the force majeure. We did work that out with the bus company because we don't pay if we don't use them. But I wasn't sure if that got brought up again or if that's something we want to put in the next contract.
I mean, we could certainly talk about it, but from my experience, these guys are more than happy to work out whatever needs to be.
They were before too, but.
I mean, these are local guys that have been living here forever and.
Well, if anything did happen and we had to go with another bus company, we definitely would want to be a little more formal, so.
Yeah, and again, I think we have termination clause in here.
Right, we do. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? That passes 5-0. And the next on our agenda is the probationary teachers, probationary teachers for non-renewal. And I'm gonna hand that off to Director Herman. Oh, sorry, I need a motion to approve.
So main.
By Director William. Second, by anybody?
Second.
Okay, to Director Bernic. Okay, hand that off to Director Herman.
Thank you to your members of the board. Today, we're bringing forward to you in our staffing process the list of probationary non-renewals. This is a friendly reminder that this list is all encompassing of multiple different factors that we non-renewal probationary staff for. Whether that's because they're filling in a long-term substitute role and the 10-year staff member is coming back or it's related to licensure issues with out-of-field permissions or tier-one requirements such torally that we have to non-renewal before rehiring them after a certain required posting date. There's also performance reasons and then also the reduction in sections. So we bring this forward in all encompassing list and do not identify which reason is linked to each to protect confidential personnel data, but so that the list is quite extensive. It's not all regarding one reason or another, it's all the reasons in totality.
Any questions?
Does out-of-field permission, is that just, they're doing something that's not necessarily, what does that mean?
Out-of-field permission means that they have a tiered licensure of three or four within, or they have a tiered licensure and then they are asking, they're getting an exception in a different licensure area to fill a position that requires a specific license. There are positions in the schools that are license-neutral, which means you can have any teaching license to fill those roles. But the vast majority of our positions require specific licensures and so individuals get out-of-field permissions in order to meet those needs. A lot of situations, they're getting, they have, they have an out-of-field permission as they work to obtain that secondary license that they're, they want to teach in. So out-of-field permissions in special ed's, for example, is common or at Old Lago where they need two licensures. Those are areas that we see a lot of OFPs in.
Any other questions?
Is it possible to tell us how many of these are for budget reductions, like?
I would, you know, the budget reduction FTE, we've talked about separately. It's not a one-to-one situation because there are some resignation retirements that we take into consideration. So we don't fully have to do all non-renewals for section reductions. We tend to not share that number broadly because we don't want to start reducing the amount of, like, okay, how many are performance-related then and how many do we know that? So we try to avoid that in a public meeting. I'm happy to figure out a way to get the information separately. But it is, it is not a directed one-to-one correlation between the amount of sections we've reduced and the amount of non-renewal for probationary due to section reductions because we do move all around all those pieces.
And have, oh, I'm sure all these people on this list have been notified that.
Correct. So our staffing process, we ensure that all administrators share the message with the non-renewals at the same time, not the exact same time, but the same day. So that we don't create a systematic concern or morale issue as people start hearing about it. It flows to the system, it's all on one day. They heard about it not last Friday, but the Friday before. So that it was well before the memo was sent to the school board and had that opportunity to hear from that. Again, we've kept this process ahead of where we have in the past aligned with what we did last year. This year, not as much for the recruiting aspect of it, but more so to ensure that these individuals have that opportunity to participate in the job fairs and other areas for hopefully finding position within the district that has availability.
Anybody else? Hearing none?
I just, very quickly, we look at this list and we look at the length. Or maybe that's just me and it seemed like a very long list and I know that for obvious reasons. And A, I want to extend my gratitude to these folks. And also make it clear too, for the people tuning in or the people reading our board packet, that some of these, you know, could come back, some could apply for other positions, correct? And so it's not, some of it is a see you later, maybe, not necessarily a goodbye. I don't, I want to be careful not to speak out of turn, of course, because I know it's a sensitive issue, but I just wanted to extend my gratitude to the people on this list.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes 5-0. And the last item is the benefit administration rate changes. And I believe we talked about this at a previous study session already. I need an approval. Begin the discussion, so I need a motion. Was that Lisa? Okay, Adkinson, second? Okay, and again, hand this over to Director Herman.
I have a recap on the whole memo, just cause it flows pretty nicely. So as you are aware, we experienced some significant concerns with our health carrier vendors. So the insurance committee reviewed request for proposals and through a voting process through all of our bargaining units, unanimously voted to move to Blue Cross Blue Shield in the middle of the HITA process. And the insurance committee has reviewed that decision and continues to move forward with that recommendation to switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield effective July 1st, 2024. With that also would come a pharmacy benefit administrator change, moving from Pro Act to Blue Cross Blue Shields, PBM, which is Prime. With that, because it's the middle of the HITA cycle, which is the Health Insurance Transparency and Accountability Act, we have the option to go into a memorandum of understanding with the largest exclusive, the largest employee group's exclusive representation. And we, the district and the union have agreed to move to a three-year HITA process so that we can get back into the schedule when we typically would have every two years. Because the concern with doing a two-year MOU right now is that we're gonna be, we're gonna be off when we typically go out for HITA. So doing the three-year gets us back on that regular cadence. A one-year would get us, would not get us very strong bids. And so the best opportunity for the best caps on rate increases in different areas of the contract and to get us back on the HITA cycle, both the union and the district field would be beneficial to agree to a three-year MOU. Through the review of all the insurance claims and the, where the fund balance specifically for the health insurance plan lies, the insurance committee, based off of the recommendation of our insurance consultant, is recommending a 5% increase to our insurance premiums for the 24-25 school year while maintaining a 0% increase on our benefit, or sorry, our dental insurance premiums. Our data for our dental insurance is showing that we still have a very healthy fund balance that we have enough to cover eight years of spend, or eight months of spend, which is a very healthy position to be in. So we do not recommend an increase to our dental insurance rates. The other piece of that that's changing is we received some unfortunate news from our life insurance provider that it was increasing quite substantially. So we needed to look at some other bids and RFPs to provide that service. And we're recommending switching to Voya, which was only a 5% increase versus the, I should have wrote it down. Sorry, originally it was 43, then moved down to 26% increase that we were otherwise seeing. Voya has very good track history with the district and other school districts and administering long-term disability and life, which is very unique to school districts in comparison to the private sector. So we feel very confident in their ability to administer our plans within our contractual obligations with some of our bargaining units. So that is the recommendation that we're bringing forward in totality for insurance changes for next year.
I have a quick question. Does Voya allow portability of the disability as well as the life after someone retires?
Um, it would depend on what their claim and case would be and the duration of the 30, there's up to 36 weeks. Uh, sorry, sorry, 36 months. It really would depend on what the claim, the claim's cost is. Are you, are you referring to them continuing to pay their premium to stay on?
They, yeah, it's portable. They wouldn't have to go through and reapply or anything like that. If they decided to pay the premium, then they could therefore keep it.
To clarify on what our plans cover for that. I would have to clarify on, on what our, our plans cover for that. It's, it's not a, it's not a contingent upon my vote, I was just curious.
In our teacher's contract, we do have a paid-up life language and plan specific to that, but for long-term disability, I'll have to double-check on that and other employee groups.
Any questions? Questions? Okay, hearing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes, N A's, that passes five zero. Okay, and I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So made.
By Director Bullion?
Second.
Second by Director Olstad. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes five zero.